Absolutely.
I did all that stuff, yep. Oh, here we go.
I will now call to order the December 7, 2023 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick. County Council is Assistant County Council, Hong Nguyen. Commissioner Savis is not attending the meeting today. He's attending a regional transportation meeting on behalf of Clackamas County. Roll call. Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got a tickle in my throat. Well, good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you have joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will direct you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I'd like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed during this business meeting. Your opinions are welcomed, and we look forward to your polite participation. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Housing Authority Board.
First item today is the Housing Authority of Clackamas County Board of Directors Consent Agenda. Joining you online is Housing Commissioner Anne Leenstra. Wait just a moment, please, for Anne to join. She's there. Oh, Commissioner Leenstra, are you there?
I'm here. My video is broken.
Got it. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Leenstra. Welcome. This is the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
One item: Approval to apply for a federal grant to continue the Resident Opportunity and Self-Sufficiency Programs for Public Housing Residents. Grant value is up to $272,250 for three years with a match of up to $68,062.50. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and matching funds through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything off this consent agenda? Seeing none, Anne Leenstra, would you please make a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda of Housing Authority.
Seconded.
Commissioner Anne Leenstra has moved we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Shaw has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Leenstra.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Anne, for participating.
You're welcome.
I will now adjourn as a Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda for the Board of County Commissioners. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials, item one: Approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. County Council, item one: Approval of board order to extend the cable TV franchise with Northwest Fiber LLC doing business as Zipley Fiber Franchise Fee Revenue is $32,000 over two years. Funding through Northwest Fiber LLC. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services, item one: Approval of Amendment Number Four: Expanding the scope of work and increase in funding of a personal services contract with Northwest Family Services for adult and youth housing supportive services. Amendment value is $472,252.21 for nine months. Total agreement value is increased to $8,250,381.21 for three years. Funding is through the Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two: Approval of a personal services contract with Ant Farm for supportive services for youth in the rural areas of Clackamas County. Contract value is $760,446.72 for seven months. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Item three: Approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to partner on a notice of funding opportunity for the Tobacco Prevention Community Grant. Agreement value is $105,000 for 20 months. Funding is through Oregon Health Authority Tobacco Tax Revenue. No county general funds are involved. Item four: Approval of a 340B Pharmacy Services Revenue Agreement with Rite Aid Headquarters Corporation for Disbursement of 340B Drugs. Agreement value is $210,000 for three years. Funding is through Rite Aid Headquarters Corporation. No county general funds are involved. Item five: Approval of a Healthcare Services Contract with Care Oregon Incorporated for Medication Primary Pathway Expansion. Contract value is $750,000 for two years. Funding is through Care Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, item one: Approval of sale documents for two properties sold at the November 2023 Surplus Property Auction. Total value is $37,295.00. Funding is through purchasers. No county general funds are involved. Item two: Approval of Amendment Number One to Funding Agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas County Historical Society for projects that will foster an understanding of the history of the Jennings Lodge Camp Meeting Site and Retreat Center. Amendment value is $9,425.15. Agreement value is increased to $175,925.15. Funding is through the Jennings Lodge Camp Meeting Site and Retreat Center Education and Preservation Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item three: Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Government Camp Village Special Road District related to Y East Trail Road. Agreement value is $60,000. Funding is through the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item four: Approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby related to the South Ivy Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. Amendment value is $4,758,410.00. Agreement value is increased to $6,947,225.00. Funding is through state-funded local project program, City of Canby, and the County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five: Approval of a Funding Agreement with Clackamas County Arts Alliance to support small business owners through project facilitation and to facilitate the purchase of art that will be installed in the new courthouse. Agreement value is $200,000. Funding is through county lottery dollars. No county general funds are involved.
Thank you, Tony. Does any commissioner wish to remove anything off the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Commissioner West has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Shaw.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as a North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one: Approval of a Grant Agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for the Maintenance Assistance Program. Grant value is $9,500 over two years with a match of $6,332.00. Funding is through the Oregon State Marine Board with matching funds from the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District General Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item two: Approval of a Professional Services Contract with Design Workshop Incorporated for consulting services to develop a park and recreation system plan. Total value not to exceed $358,028.00. Funding through North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Capital Asset Fund. No county general funds are involved.
Does any director wish to remove any items off this consent agenda? Seeing none. May I entertain a motion?
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Second. Director Shaw has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda, and Director West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director West.
Aye.
Director Shaw.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Well, up next, Gary, is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify? Tony, do we have any blue cards filled out?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Not at this time. I see no one in the room who would like to testify. Tony, do we have anyone online?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Wow. That's incredible. Yes. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary.
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to share the great work our county employees do. Today, I have a great story from Health Housing and Human Services. One of our employees saved a person's life. Let me tell you more. So this is about housing support specialist Karina Cruz. A mother with a serious medical condition and her disabled son had been living in their car here in Clackamas County and were desperately in need of shelter. Our housing staff here at the county had been in communication with this mother to secure shelter when suddenly the mother stopped communicating with our staff. Our staff called, texted, emailed, and had no response. Now, sometimes this is normal because the person locates shelter elsewhere and then does not follow up with us. However, a few weeks later, this mother called our staff in dire straits, and she could not remember the name of the contact she was working with at Clackamas County. So Karina Cruz took control, took action, found out who the right contact was made, and helped secure shelter for this family immediately. So because of Karina's work and our coworkers here in Health Housing Human Services, they literally saved this mother's life and her child, and they are now in shelter here in Clackamas County. So just one example of the great work our employees do every day to literally save the lives of our members of the public. But wait, there's more. Next, Cindy Moore, our Economic Development Coordinator in the Office of Economic Development, was named the President of the Oregon Association-- I'm sorry, the Oregon Economic Development Association. This is a statewide nonprofit association that supports economic development professional in Oregon and helps expand Oregon's economy. There are over 200 members of this state association, primarily staff, and Cindy was just named the President of this association. A volunteer thing, she's still a county employee. So congratulations to Cindy, whose professionalism and outstanding work she does will now be recognized statewide, not just here at Clackamas County. That is my update today. Quickly, an announcement. Next Thursday's business meeting, December 14th. It is a morning business meeting. This would have been your evening meeting, but you have made it a morning meeting. So next Thursday, December 14th, the board meets at 10:00 a.m. That is my update for today, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Kudos to Cindy Moore. Yeah, she's one of our employees who are quite competent in our economic development and along with the other employees there, and thank you, Cindy, for volunteering your time to do that. Well, commissioners, we are now at Commissioner Communication. This week, we had to cut some of our comments short, but I have to say it's only 10:15. If there's anything you want to talk about, you do not need to be briefed today, is what I'm saying. Commissioner Shaw, you're up first.
Yes. Good morning, Clackamas County. It's a rainy morning. First comment is on safety. We, in the area, we lost one person to a flood on Johnson Creek here this week. Tillman County reports this morning they've lost two lives to high water during flooding. Please, let's keep the kids away from the creeks and the rivers this weekend. Be safe. On the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund, as many of you know, one of our residents from Borning, Mr. Stephen Bates, is a visionary lead on the project for a memorial to recognize the sacrifice of Americans who gave all in the Vietnam War. They're still $427,000 short. But I'd like to remind people of the sacrifice that many young Americans made in that conflict in Southeast Asia, where we lost 58,220 young Americans that never came home. 153,000 wounded in action, not to include another 150,000 that were wounded but never required hospitalization. At the end of the war, we had 2,646 Americans missing in action, and today, we are still missing 1,584 MIA. I mention this to you just to remind you of the tremendous sacrifice made by young Americans. Most of them barely out of high school, never really had a chance for a life. And we can remember their service to include the veterans that are here and home with us today by contributing to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial for the Capitol in Salem. You can find it online, Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. Please take a look at that. Help out if you can. On the short-term rental regulation for unincorporated Clackamas County, as many of you know who operate short-term rentals, the registration process is available online. We've had good response so far, but we know we still have some STRs that are not yet registered. So please go to our Clackamas County website and make sure you register as soon as you can. You can also mail in-- you can download the registration form on the website. You can send it in on an email, or you can mail it to the County Finance Department here at 2051 Kane Road. And within 30 days after receiving your accurate and complete registration form, the county staff will provide registration confirmation to you. Thank you very much for your compliance in this very important effort. On families and children, you know, as we draw near to Christmas, there's nothing more important in my mind than the health and welfare of the children of Clackamas County. And today, it is not easy to raise a family. It's not easy to keep a marriage together either. And sometimes, people just need a little bit of encouragement and maybe somebody to sit down and talk to. Somebody who's got some ideas for solutions to some of the pressures you might be experiencing with a family. And so Clackamas County's Children, Family, and Community Connections is waiting to talk to you. Please, if you know somebody who's having a problem with family issues this Christmas season, please let them know. They can call 655-8840 and talk to somebody at our County Children and Family Community Connections and get the help they need. Also, it's unfortunate, but this time of year during the holidays is the hardest time for people who are lonely. And I ask everybody in Clackamas County to find somebody that you know in your neighborhood that might be alone and arrange for time to drop in for a visit to that person or that family and bring along a little bit of Christmas cheer. For those who have a more serious problem with depression this time of year, I'd like to remind you that we have the Urgent Mental Health Walk-In Center at 11211 Southeast 82nd, Suite 0 in Happy Valley. Just, it's easy to find. And please don't hesitate to contact them at 655-8585. Also, today, on 7 December, it's 82 years since the attack on Pearl Harbor that took the lives of 2,403 young American servicemen and civilians that morning. And I mention this to you only because I think it's important that Americans never forget that the price of freedom and security for a nation is eternal vigilance, eternal awareness, constant preparation, and constant readiness. And so please take a moment to consider the sacrifice made 82 years ago at Pearl Harbor. And also, at this time of year, we have a lot of families who-- it's difficult. We have a lot of families that need food support. And I'd like to thank-- call out and thank one nonprofit that we have here in Clackamas County. They're located in Clackamas, just off Jennifer Street, and that's the American Military Encouragement Network. They are dedicated to making sure that no family goes hungry. Every week, amen, for sure, they push out 3,000 pounds of food, not just to veterans and their families, but to everybody in the region. And they go all the way to the Grand Ronde, Umatilla, and Warm Springs to bring some needed food to those populations also. So I'd like to thank all the people who have supported the American Military Encouragement Network here in the county for your work. And if you can help or donate, you can find them at amen-project.org online. And with that, I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. I mean, excuse me, Shaw. I beg your pardon. Commissioner Shaw. I knew you were going to mention Pearl Harbor Day, and I'm glad you did. I noticed the governor ordered all flags to be flown at half-staff because of the memorials, and that's important. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Shaw, for your remarks today, especially about Vietnam, because those were my high school and early college years. And it's true that many of the kids I went to high school with, as well as relatives, were involved in that conflict, and my brother-in-law was one on the boat, the Macon Delta, basically going up and down those rivers, pretty much, you know, patrolling and putting himself in danger, and some of the kids I know never did make it home. And some that did make it home were so traumatized by some of the things they had seen that, much like what's happening today, and I don't want to make this a downer, but we do, you know, we had some suicides too, and that is a problem in the military right now. I think we have to remember in these conflicts how traumatizing it is. And that was the war that defined my generation and, I think, our generation together, and it had a huge impact on us. And I also wanted to mention something in terms of Pearl Harbor because I was door-knocking one day a number of years ago in the neighborhood because that's what you do to find out what's happening on the ground with people and your citizens. So I came to this door, and this older gentleman shows up, and he was elderly man who was very talkative, and we really hit it off. And I was chatting with him. He said, "Yep, yep, I was at Pearl Harbor." And I went, "You were at Pearl Harbor?" And it was interesting how he didn't make light of it, but it was just like his duty. And what he said was, "Yep, yep, one minute I was on a boat, and the next second I was in the water." And that's about all he remembers. And he told me, you know, that he was one of the lucky ones that swam to shore. And I know if anyone has had an opportunity to go see the memorial in Hawaii, it suggests they do so. It is one of the most moving memorials I've ever been to. It has a picture of, I guess it was one of the bands, the music-- military music bands there, and had a big picture of them, and all of them-- that whole band perished during that. But it was so amazing to me to talk to this World War II veteran and how you could see why they were the greatest generation. He didn't-- he just was a matter of fact, and that's what happened, and he did his duty for his country. And I still think of that today as one of the best opportunities I've had to meet a citizen and one of our military heroes who really served on the ground and just happened to be door-knocking. So that was a fantastic experience. In terms of families and children, I'm glad you mentioned that too because one of the things that I think it's important to think about right now is that one of the things we're finding out from our business community is that a lot of folks are having difficulties getting back to work. A lot of families are working to be two-income families because it is so expensive to live these days. But there is a significant lack of childcare, not only in our county but throughout the state, as well as in other states. So they've been working on that through the National Association of Counties. And here locally, I've been going with Laura Edmonds, who's our Economic Development Director, because I'm seeing it as an economic development workforce issue, you know, and finding out where-- okay, who has daycare? Why do they do it? How does it help retain workforce? And we've visited a number of facilities, mostly run by kinder care, and we're finding out that the larger businesses such as Daimler and Siemens are offering onsite daycare. And we've been working on our Workforce Board to figure out how we can expand that model across our county. Because what we're finding out is that it's a barrier for people getting back to the job on work. It's a very troubling thing for parents because they want to make sure that their kids are in a safe, sound environment where they're being taken care of. And the beauty of the onsite Daimler and Siemens is that those parents actually get to sit and have lunch with their kids. They get to kind of check in on them during the day. So one of the things we're looking at is how we get that site base. And interestingly enough, the business community is really starting to step up to the plate and see that. So you'll be hearing more about how we work that through this year to make sure that we-- if people need to get back to work to support their families, they have good childcare and they still have access and time to be with their kids even during the day, and how well that actually works. I want to talk a little bit about Measure 110. I know that this committee is all in alignment with believing that Measure 110, and particularly as our DA has told us, it's been a disaster. It has not been, in my mind, what you would call harm reduction. It's been increasing harm to people. And so I know this whole-- our whole-- all of my colleagues at this table have been working with the Association of Oregon Counties and our DA's to not talk-- I don't talk about it like criminalization because, you know, we really don't. Jail is not the place for people, however. However, there has to be-- because when people are addicted, they lose their ability to be rational and be cognitively healthy. And there has to be some way to compel people into treatment, and that is where our drug courts come in. And I believe that basically giving people a choice, "Well, you're either going to have to go to jail, or you can get treatment. We can get you to a center. We can get you healthy. We can pull together a system to make sure that you're going to, you know-- healthy, we can pull together a system to make sure that you're going to, you know, beat this demon, disease that's been plaguing you." And I do think that's the way to go, because it gets more people into the appropriate treatment in a timely manner. And the way Measure 110 has been written, it is, has not, it pretty much has destroyed that, that's a strong word, destroyed that system we had in place. Plus, it's making it a lot harder for folks who are public safety folks to track down those dealers and people who are actively dealing with and selling this, Commissioner, my Commissioner Ben may say all that poison on the street that's killing people. So we are going to be having in January a meeting with the Association of Oregon Counties. I know that we reviewed a letter that Max Williams, who is working on an initiative, sent to us. I believe we have sent him that letter to review. He's been asked by the Association of Oregon Counties to speak at the Health, Housing, and Human Services Committee, because if the legislature is not going to address this in a short session, I strongly believe that there will be an initiative on the ballot that, that will probably overwhelmingly pass, because our public relations folks have done a survey, and overwhelmingly, people are seeing this as a main concern. But remember, it's not because we want to make people criminals, but there has to be some way to compel them and to have part of a public safety system that says, "You need treatment." And it's our job as counties to make sure that that system is in place. And Ben, you know more than I do, but I think you're, hopefully nod your head with what I've been talking about here. So Max is on top of that, and Commissioner Ben, you've been a real champion of this, and been very vocal and have pulled together, I think, a consortium in the Health and Services Committee, haven't you? Yeah. Yay, yay for that. The other, final thing I want to mention is that, and thank you for giving us time to wax eloquent today, Chair, I appreciate this.
Well, we have the time.
We have the time now, so you can, got to listen to us. I did just go back to St. Paul, Minnesota, to the National Association of Counties, because I'm Chair of the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. I talked to Ben yesterday, and we've been talking about the shortage, and you've, and he's been spearheading this here, of workers on our healthcare system and our ambulance services. So you're pulling something together locally, and I'm going to be calling up the CE, my folks from the CEWD today, and we are going to arrange to have a discussion about the shortage of EMTs, and how other counties in the nation, and yes, and paramedics, and how other counties in the nation, we're going to check in with them and say, "Are you having the same problem?" I'm 99% sure it's going to be a resounding yes. And if it's a resounding yes as well, then we're going to start looking at other models across the state, to see, how are they solving that problem? Because you came up with some great ideas that have, with which I hope you'll talk about after I'm finished waxing eloquent. And the other thing is, one of the other issues, so that, I guess that's one of the reasons I want to let people know, that's why it's important to have those national connections, because throughout this nation, counties are facing similar problems. And the best thing are, that does for us, is we, as we work in the National Association of Counties, it gets us in contact with people where we really get best practices that we could implement on the ground. And actually, I think with Ben's work, we'll probably get a NACO award by the time we're over, so let's hope that. Finally, I'm just going to talk a little bit about county priorities for the 2024 Farm Bill. That is a big deal for Clackamas County, and it's another thing, reason why I go to these other places to find this, because NACO represents all of America's 3,069 county governments, works with our federal partners to develop a substantive farm bill that will empower counties to make critical investments in our nation's most underserved populations. As a key intergovernmental partner, counties welcome the opportunity to work with our federal partners towards the passage of a bipartisan, comprehensive, and long-term 2024 Farm Bill that achieves our shared priorities of invigorating rural communities, providing access to affordable and healthy foods, and supporting ranchers and farmers that stimulate our economy and feed our nation. So, I'm not going to read every single point here, I may do one every week, because there's lots of priorities in that Farm Bill. But why is that important to Clackamas County? Because we are rural, urban, suburban, and wild, and our rural economy is largely agricultural. We are, I still believe, the largest producer of Christmas trees in the nation. I know, Chair Smith, that you grow hazelnuts.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, one of our biggest exports is hazelnuts, part of our agricultural economy. And the bottom line is also an issue, and I ran a farm with strawberry fields and dealt with farm, people with our workers, and with housing and things of that sort. That is another issue as we move forward, is to make sure that our farmers and our ranchers have the workforce they need in order to feed our county, our state, and our country. So you'll be hearing more about comprehensive issues of the 2024 Farm Bill. I think this is also something colleagues, we will all be in alignment with. So, thank you for letting me talk so long. I appreciate it.
No, no problem.
Okay, great.
Thank you for the updates on that, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up.
I'll touch on a couple of things here, I'm going to start, just think Commissioner Scholl's really important comments and reflection on historical significance of not just Pearl Harbor, but the sacrifice on many conflicts that people sign up for, so that we can have really the freedoms and the liberties that we have today, and be able to live the blessed lives that we do, and that actually many people across the globe can have some of those same experiences that are so valuable, and that make everything more worthwhile. So I appreciate that. Commissioner Scholl, I just found that those words really did hit the point, and I appreciate them. I mean, I am going to touch a little, just because I think one of the more, this was a busy week, but one of the more significant things that, throughout this busy week, was my time in Salem, as we continue to really deal with the persistent acute and chronic crisis around addiction and mental health. And as the legislature is trying to grapple within a five-week short session to maybe make some significant policy changes to address this chronic and persistent crisis, I want to paint a picture again. We lose 80 to 100 souls every month in Oregon to this crisis. Of all ages, all socioeconomic backgrounds, all races, genders, neighbors, people in our community are dead every month. That's a lot of people. Now, maybe if it was a different crisis, there'd be a little more urgency. I would argue that we have not risen to the occasion with a level of urgency to save 80 to 100 souls in Oregon monthly. We have a cultural problem in Oregon. I believe part of that cultural problem is, is we are permissive and facilitate the use of fentanyl and illicit substances in the state. We aren't honest about how we are permissive with such a deadly substance. Unfortunately, we don't have a cultural worldview that's, that wants it to be really hard to get high and easy to get treatment. I don't mean to oversimplify it, but that's not Oregon right now, it's not hard to get high. We always seem to try to make it easier to do this to your, to take these substances, or to get hooked and become a substance user, to fall into this really destructive disease that leads to a lot of despair. But we don't make it easy to get treatment still. And I want to talk to Measure 110, and maybe it's just us four listening to this meeting today, staffers here. In 2020, Oregon voted to decriminalize possession of small quantities of all drugs through ballot Measure 110. It was the first type measure of its kind in the country, and it was quite a bold step, whether we agree with it or not, I'll say that. But looking back a number of years now, since 2020, we're three years into this, Oregon's model lacks two crucial elements. And we also get, we often get compared to Portugal's model, even though we didn't do this the same way as Portugal at all. But we lack recovery support, and we also lack decentivizing drug use. We incentivize drug use and give people no support as they take these poisons. And then we're slow to respond, as 80 to 100 people die monthly in our community. Oregon's model after, has a negligible treatment component. This is a damning statistic, but it's true. Fewer than 0.85% of people falling under the state's new law were referred to treatment. Less than 1%. Wow. The measure hasn't lived up to expectations and is failing some important outcomes. While recovery services have begun to be built, woefully inadequately, but they've begun to be built, a year after the Measure 110, Oregon became the second fastest growing in the US for drug deaths, far outpacing the neighboring states, and three times faster than the rest of the country. Oregon is still near the bottom of the nation in access to treatment. So what are they saying there? After passing Measure 110, we can immediately see the data that showed as we made the drug, fentanyl, more available, our deaths began to skyrocket. As people are in crisis, we leave them stranded on our streets. It's a moral imperative that we continue to make this a top priority, and that the legislature stopped abdicating its role and act with the urgency necessary for a crisis of this kind. We have to deal with the demand issue also. Some of the supply issue, we're stuck with because of bad border policy and federal policy and things outside of our border. But I watched, one of my favorite movies growing up was Field of Dreams, and the famous quote from that, "If you build it, they will come." Well, we've built this, and here they are. We're getting what we built. And so, it was difficult to sit in the hearing for, in the committee in Salem, early this week, on this issue, all day long, or most of the day, and see the room packed with the same people, with the same broken ideas, almost pre-arranged for the dog and pony show to pretend like they're listening, say the same broken mantra, and really worry that we're going to miss another opportunity for elected leaders to do their role, have a spine, and start to be real substantive in their policy to address this issue head-on. So, I don't know if the special interest groups are winning, I don't know if it's money and campaigns, I don't know what it is, but I do know 80 to 100 people are dying every month in Oregon. And that's not okay. So, I don't mean to be so somber, but I am quite bothered by this, I've spent a lot of time on this throughout the week. Had an amazing meeting, my first meeting with NACO Steering Committee on Healthcare, was able to put forth a couple of our policy ideas. We are not alone in this. Was quite impressed with the direction of the NACO Steering Committee on their priorities. We specifically talked about residential treatment, long-term treatment investment for counties, so that we can get people the care they need. We cannot have medieval-type outdated, inadequate treatment models for fentanyl, and pretend like that's going to give people the treatment that they need, so modernizing that residential treatment. And then we did talk about some other healthcare priorities overall, to help with like some preventative work for people to hopefully not have to have bad health outcomes. So that was a really, I look forward to engaging in that in the future. And so I'll leave you guys with that, but a lot of work in the healthcare space, great meeting with Mary Rambo's team this morning on aid and assist, making sure we're up to speed on that, and, and a lot of work happening. So, I don't know, I'll leave you guys with that, let's keep advocating for the Clackamas County way to solve this. One thing is true, and everybody is saying it, is that we are getting a lot of kudos and praise across the state because of our sober leadership in this issue. And I think part of it is, is because we are not part of the status quo that created the problem, that's now trying to pretend like they have the solutions for the problem they created. We've been very localized and purposeful in our approach. We went from being really angry about it like everybody else, to purposeful in how we address this, the Clackamas County way. So, the board, thank you for your leadership, and I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Just a reflection on Measure 110. Clackamas County was the leader and the first to refer an advisory vote to its citizens in asking to questions, should the governor call a special session and overturn Measure 110, and then shall the Oregon Legislature, Clackamas County members fix, I can't remember the exact language on that, but anyway, you'll get a chance to vote on that in May. And it's going to be a very important vote. Our county just went out with a poll, our PGA on that, 3,800 respondents, I think, almost 4,000. Over 80% said, "Yeah, the governor needs to get the legislature in session and fix this." And every poll you see, there's new, a new poll out today in the news, really high across the state. So, we look forward to doing that. When we started, we were alone. Now we have 14 counties who have joined us across the state in some fashion on this, and more cities are adding their name to the list, as we go forward to try to capture this problem and take care of it. We've got to stop the flow of illegal drugs that's killing our people. Government can't possibly build enough recovery centers to deal with the huge amount of addiction that is infecting our people. Thank you all for working on this, and I'm very happy with the Board of County Commissioners as we all are walking lockstep in to try to fix this problem. It's been very enlightening for me. County employees' awards ceremony was yesterday, and it's a wonderful time for us to get face-to-face with our county employees on a bimonthly basis. We celebrated November and December awards at a luncheon, and each employee gets to stand up and talk about themselves, and it's an opportunity for us to get to know them and honor their time spent here and their hard work. On Monday, I was in an interesting meeting with the tri-chairs from the counties of Montloma, Washington, and myself, meeting with Lynn Peterson, Metro President, in one room, me, talking about how Metro wants to somehow redo the supported housing services measure just passed a few years ago. Evidently, they're getting pressure from this group, governor, that person, and somehow they want to redo it, and we all three were in lockstep, saying, "We have just started this. Tax money just rolled in, we've only been able to implement this maybe two years. Do not destabilize us, do not raise the taxes." Because they're looking at running another ballot initiative in November. And we have said no. But the three counties are in agreement, just leave us alone. Metro is not a service provider, we are the service provider. And I suspect because this tax increase has outperformed itself, meaning it has collected much, much more money than anticipated, it's collecting more money than the counties can possibly spend, maybe we should back off on the amount of tax and not tax people so much. Correct? And there's a concern about the definition and how it's used. So, "Supported housing services for a disparate group of homeless people." But, in the measure, it doesn't say you can build housing with it. So, although it's a supported housing services, where are you going to house them? So I think maybe the intent of the people who voted, the citizens, are okay with that, but Metro's being Metro, maybe a little bit difficult in that. But we will continue finding what we need to do in Clackamas County, and I will continue with the updates on that. On a good note, this week, this board passed a 23-hour stabilization center, and we have funding for that. That is a place where police will pick up people, or a county sheriff's deputies pick up people who maybe have committed a crime, but it's clearly they don't belong in jail, because either of an addiction, or a psychotic crisis, or a mental health issue, they really don't belong in jail. We take them to the 23-hour stabilization center and evaluate them to see what the problem is. And then we move them on down the line for recovery, for whatever assistance they may need, evaluation. And then, if they're lucky, they can end up in drug court. Drug courts are always very successful, and those need to be re-implemented in the state drug court. You go to drug court, and the judge says, "Well, you have an opportunity here to go into remission and recovery, and we will find you a job, and we will house you. But your payback is you're clean, and you get to stay out of jail, and if you don't do that, you go to jail." So it's a compassionate way, but it has a stick attached to it and a carrot, and that's important. Also, we are- Also, we are hiring a new chief county attorney. Our longtime devoted employee, Stephen Magcor, has decided to retire, and so we are in the market for a head county attorney. And we look forward to those interviews when they come. Soon the job will be posted out there. So if you know of anybody who wants this job, it's not an easy job, working with commissioners and staff and everybody else, but we look forward to that hire. Next week, this board has a planning session, where we will determine how we move forward on our addictions recovery model that we've been very serious about doing, and we look forward to participation on that. I do think it's, we broadcast audio only.
Audio only.
Audio only, you can listen to that. And it's a real nuts-and-bolts meeting, not formal. We'll be throwing ideas. We have a presentation from our staff who is leading us through that. Next Thursday will be our last business meeting of the year, as we conclude a very successful 2023. Public and Government Fairs will be showing a video of our accomplishments for the year. And Commissioners, I understand there are many, and it's quite impressive. We've been working for almost three years on getting to the place where we have enjoyed ribbon cuttings and accomplishments, and I look forward to seeing the video next week, and hopefully all people out there listening can view that as well. Thank you all for participating and seeing no further business before this commission. We are adjourned.